Okay, you've got the agenda in front of you. Are any additions or changes need to be made to the agenda for tonight? Not is there motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comment, does anyone wish to address the council? Moving on, then, we have a certificate for Krista Goodell, Krista? It's Goodell, right? Did I correct that, right? Okay. For your dedication, dedicated service to the city of mayor and Mayor Parkport since 2007. Thank you on behalf of the mayor, city council, and Mayor Parkport.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista.
Okay, then we've got the consent agenda, 4.1 approval of minutes for the January 11th regular council meeting, 4.2 approval of minutes for the December 8th Parkport meeting, 4.3 approved additional claims for a month of January, includes round-up pay request number 7 in amount of $23,913.11. And 4.4 approval of sheriff's department report for a month ending December 2015. Do any of those items need to be pulled up for further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay, motion made second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay, staff reports, public works?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Kyle is not present tonight, but he did provide you with his monthly staff report and he has the calendar year-end review for you also. So that includes your packet of the other questions I'd be happy to convey to you and get answered to you.
Any questions for Luanne that you can answer for us on behalf of Kyle?
No, actually tell Kyle thank you for that year-end report. Nice. One other question, I don't know, I've noticed our water pressure's off a little. I don't know, is he running the tower a lot lower this year with the new mixer?
I will find out.
I have a water pressure gauge in my basement and it's 65 pounds.
Is it?
Yeah. But I'm close to power too.
I haven't noticed any difference in water pressure really. You have? You haven't? So maybe that's just stuff in your...
Check on...
There's tech there because I have not noticed any difference.
I noticed when the water tower was down and there was an issue, I could tell.
Yeah, there was some issues. But now, since it's back in service, I haven't noticed anything. So maybe I'll just check with Kyle on that one. Here's Kyle right now, you can ask him yourself.
Oh, why?
I can do it later.
You can do it later, okay. We'll talk to you later. Okay, moving on.
Thank you for your year-end review.
Oh, okay. I just took a few of the things off of my people's那份 report throughout last year.
Okay, moving on, 5.2 city isn't here.
Yeah, you have your report in your packet, for the most part, really just literally kind of miscellaneous things that we've been working on here towards the end of last year. Little restoration, wetland restoration item on there, which should be potentially starting this week with some construction out there.
Okay. And that school zone study is still under-going, or what?
That is done. That was just some time that I had put on there or had at a reduced rate. I had got together with Joe Landstrainer and just gone through the report with him to make sure he understands it. Stood it and answered his questions, so that was really the last thing that happened with that.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave? There was no sheriff's department report. City administration, go on.
Mr. Mayor, council members in your packet, I just provided you with review of 2015 as I had done previously last year. And so this gives you a synopsis of your city council meetings and what happened. It all goes. It also gives you all the ordinance and resolutions that were passed by you as a city council. I provide to you then the number of packets that I put together and a few of the job duties I do. I gave you the year-end investments of which the city auditor looks at. This is something that I do monthly where I enter interest from our investments and our checking accounts and our CDs. And then reconcile it and do a quarterly interest, which lowers in finishes and puts into the bannion. I gave you the copy of the bonded indebtedness report. It shows how much debt we have. The final levy was in there. Building permits issued and the planning commission actions, Parkport goals and some of the actions of the Park Board. The EDA, and then the EDA, some of their actions. I gave you information about the electronic sign and the sign users. The fire department and calls for service were just taken from his monthly reports. And then the main mayor senior commission for a lifetime. I also gave you what their goals were and just a few things, act signs that they had. And then at the very end is the check reconciliation of the fund balance for your review for the end of December 25th. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Any questions for Luanne?
It's a good thorough report.
Yeah, I enjoyed it. It really helped recap for me.
Right, what you did all year, what you did all year. Yes, you're asked.
It made me tired of reading it. Okay. Okay, moving on then, 6.1 presentation from Carver County Public Health preparing for an aging population.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Jennifer Anderson from Carver County Public Health is here to present to you preparing for an aging population. Jennifer also provides staff support to the mayor senior commission for a lifetime and attends all of our meetings and assists, gives an update and helps the commission on where they want to go for their goals and where they see themselves being in the next year. So we appreciate her time and she comes and spends with us. So thank you for that very much.
You ought to try and, this one should work from that. If you, the left button, I think, will work. Others, you just have to tell me and I'll just have to answer here.
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Jennifer Anderson. I work for Carver County Public Health. And within public health is the Carver County Office of Aging. So I took that over about a year ago now. And the work that we're doing is talking to communities and giving them some data and information about Carver County and the fact that we're aging pretty quickly. This is a presentation that was given last January at the Carver County Leaders Meeting at Government Center. When it was provided, it was given with countywide staff. So we've gone through and tweaked the presentation for every community within the county. And so the data you'll have tonight is specific to mayor. You should have a data sheet in front of you and I'll be referring to this information in the presentation. Tonight I'll be talking and sharing a little bit about changes in the county's aging population. The increasing number of older residents. We're talking primarily about the baby boomers. So those born between 1946 and 1964. At this point, they would be between 52 and 70 years of age today. They've had very, very different life experiences from their parents and have different preferences and expectations. So what does all this mean for the city of mayor? What opportunities do we have to partner to meet the needs of this population? And how can the Office of Aging assist you? So what's the issue? Keep in mind that most of the numbers that I'm referring to tonight and they're on your form are from the 2010 census. And so for these figures, we're talking in 2013, there was about 8,300 persons within the county who were 65 plus. So that's about 9% of the population. In 15 years, by 2030, we're looking at just over 26,000 residents who will be 65 plus, almost triple. That'll be 23% of the population and about 92% of those will be baby boomers. So a huge increase in the aging population for the county. The boomers are the longest sustained, provided the longest sustained birth rate in the US. And at the time, they required, there was a massive building of elementary schools because of that population bulk, so interesting. So how would boomers be different than today's seniors? Keep in mind, boomers are 52 to 70. My mom is 70 and if I called her a senior, I'd probably be taken out of the will, so I'm gonna, I try not to use the word senior. But in terms of family life, they were married later in life, more divorces and fewer kids, more geographically dispersed. Many have traveled out of the country. Women are driving more. More women are handling the finances. More women were working, period. Higher level of education for the boomers. They are more affluent. Most came up in two, were living in two-income families. And at this point, many are still working beyond retirement. The boomer issues in Carver County, what we're seeing is that they're redefining work and retirement. They're caregiving for their family members and they're mandating different housing options for downsizing. Early boomers, those between 66 and 70, are primarily empty nesters at this point. They're still working. They may be doing a phased retirement. We have one of the highest percentages of county, of our community ed participation from our boomers out here in Carver County. Some are caring for family members. Typically, it's a spouse or siblings, as most boomers no longer have their parents with them. The National Alliance for Caregiving estimated that 84% of caregivers are female. A third of them are still working and they're providing roughly $5,000 in financial support per year for the person that they are caregiving for, which is a big commitment. And when you're talking about housing options for downsizing, if you're a boomer and you're lucky enough to still have your spouse or your partner, chances are you're, as I said, an empty nester. You've got a lot of square footage. Carver County homes are big homes. There's a lot of square footage. They probably don't necessarily need all that space anymore. Most are looking to downsize into a single-level living style home, whether it's a town home, a condominium with universal design features. When I say universal design, I'm talking the kind of design for people of all ages, not specifically people who are in a wheelchair or disabled. Boomers want to reinvest their equity and they want to stay in their community. They want to age in place. And one of the biggest issues out here in Carver County is that we don't have that style of single-level living that will allow boomers to downsize and stay in the community. If that's what they're looking for, they're most typically going to have to leave the community and move to Hennepin County. We've got a housing continuum. When you think about family living, we all start out here in the single-family home. When it's time to downsize, does anybody know the average age entrance into assisted living in Minnesota? It's 85. So if you're my mom, who's single, my dad passed away 12 years ago. We just sold the family home last year. She's got 15 years, maybe 20, before she's ready to go into any sort of assisted living. So where do you go in between here? There's options for downsizing or into market-rate apartments, which is what she did in Mankato. We're desperately trying to get her up here to the cities. But she went from a, it was probably about a 3,500 square foot, four-bedroom, two-bath home into an apartment that was about 1,400 square feet. No more lawn maintenance, no more having to have somebody come in and clean. Just a much easier way of life. It allowed her to be more active in the community. And being in an apartment at single-level living, she's got kind of the upscale amenities that boomers are looking for. Granite talent countertops, stainless steel appliances, things like that, wider doorways. At this point, in Carver County, 80% of homes are owner-occupied. And so this is kind of the, the kind of housing that we're talking about as that transition. Who should care about these issues? County residents for sure, especially those who are boomers between 52 and 70. They are the largest consumer group in US history to date. Carver County and local governments, private businesses, civic organizations, nonprofits, and faith communities. And if Carver County communities don't care about their boomers, boomers will likely be forced to move. Boomers want to stay near friends and family. The Sun Belt exodus of my grandparents' age has slowed down. We're having more mild winters and so more boomers are staying up here in Minnesota. So let's take a look at your city. So you've got your demographic sheet in front of you. As I said, this profile is done for the county and every community within the county. It pulls data from the 2010 census, data projections, the American Community Survey, and the Minnesota Demographics Center. So in terms of mayor, and keep in mind again, these are 2010 figures, so they're probably a little bit, numbers are probably a little bit bigger. You roughly have about 300 boomers in mayor. And the age demographics are broken down for you. But 20 to 44 is the largest population group at this point. If you look at the graph, you don't have a lot of boomers at this point, but the age range behind them is almost double the current boomers. Median household income for mayor, 45 to 64 years old is $92,000. That is greater than... You're looking at greater than the overall county and the state of Minnesota. In terms of how you compare to other communities, New Germany in that age group is about 34,000. And the highest, Victoria, which is about 141,000. Boomers tend to support local businesses. They have increased income, increased home values. Definitely a demographic you want to keep. In terms of homeownership and rental, 89% of all households in mayor own their own home. 24% of those are baby boomers. And I'm guessing that number will skyrocket with the population coming up behind the boomers. And just under 9% of boomers in mayor are renters. So you've got a very strong population that owns their home and they'll want to reinvest their money. And education level. You've got a well-educated population. In terms of comparison to the county, boomers countywide, 42% have their bachelor's. 22% in the county have some college or after high school. In terms of high school diploma, county numbers are 23% compared to your 38%. In 15 years, so in 2030, there will be more baby boomers in Carver County than there are children in kindergarten in Carver County. So how can we plan together? And I think the mayor commission for a lifetime has made it pretty clear through their work that they want to be a community for a lifetime. They incorporated that as part of their title, I believe it was early this year, late last year. The commissions typically work to identify the issues, services, supports, and gaps within each community. They research those issues and they advise the city council on aging issues. In 2007, my supervisor, Katie Boone, was hired to begin the work of the Office of Aging. It serves as an anchor to provide leadership communities, for communities on aging issues. Reinforces the vision of Carver County for a lifetime. And we definitely want to make sure that the aging population can stay here in the county and age in place. Some of the work that we've done over the last seven, eight years, we've provided learning opportunities for county and electric officials, staff. We've provided Age Well Drive Well Conference in 2012. Universal design training for city staff and planners in 2009, which we're going to be offering again. Many of the people who were initially trained in 2009 have moved on, so there is new city leadership in place. There are communities who are holding conversations with housing developers about the kinds of housing that they want to see. Victoria just had an event last week. They had three developers out to talk about this downsized housing and what they want to see in future homes built in Victoria. We've worked with sheriff's office on medicine take-back programs, drop boxes, collectively, to be able to collect our medications in a safe manner and have them disposed of. The Office of Aging is active with the Triad Program and we do have representation from mayor on the Triad Committee. Door-to-door is active in Carver County. And just recently, the city of Chanhassen has implemented the Act on Alzheimer's Toolkit. That is a year-long initiative that will work to make Chanhassen dementia-friendly, working with businesses to train them, to help them better understand what somebody... It provides a safe and respectful and informed community when it comes to people living with and caring for those with dementia. So that's definitely something that the mayor could consider as well. So we've had a lot of success since 2007. Like I said, I took over last year. Working on a calendar of trainings and educational opportunities for communities and commission members for 2016. We held a 2015 joint commission meeting where we had over 25 people representing all the different commissions within the county come out to the landscape arboretum. We identified, through conversation, that group identified, kind of the top three issues for aging commissions were housing, transportation, and volunteer recruitment, making sure that we've got people coming into the aging commissions who can carry on the work. And that's something that I am, will be working on in 2016 from the Office of Aging. Any questions, comments?
Any questions for?
Well, I think you did a good job on it.
Sal was just talking about me. Thank you.
One of the things that says the city updates its comprehensive plan, which we'll be doing in the next year or two, that there will be a chapter addressing some of the aging issues that, or that the city wants to be able to implement or put in place. So we already have a chapter that the Commission for a Lifetime adopted on the policy, which you saw here, which went to all the commissions and boards. But that'll get integrated into our comprehensive plan now.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Thank you. And we will move on to 6.2 approval of buildup agreement Hidden Creek 6th Edition. Luanne, just a question or comment on the packet. I saw a lot of duplication there, so we need to get rid of the duplication there. At least when the seventh edition comes, let's try and eliminate that. There's a lot, a lot of pages duplicated.
On the, in the development agreement?
Well, in what was sent to us.
Because in the memo, John puts one thing, and he puts all his stuff that is the resolution. And then he attaches all this stuff again to the resolution. So where do you, that's why it's duplicated. So I don't know if you don't, you, I don't want to be taking away from what his memo is. So this memo may point to one of his attachments to the pivot. And then the resolution has all of those additional things.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's why there's so much duplication on. So you tell me what you want me to do there.
I guess then it's fine. I just was kind of wondering whether that explains it, I guess, so.
Right, because there is. There's the final plat in there twice. I think there's the letter from council members in there twice. And I think it's in the development agreement again. I mean, it's in here three times. I realize that. But I don't know if you want me to have him redo his memo some way or whatever.
No, that's, that's by design.
The resolutions, I think we want all that documentation to back the resolutions and the development agreement.
Okay, that explains it. Okay, anyhow, with that, the development agreement for Hidden Creek 6th Edition.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this property was originally preliminary planted in 2002 under the Hidden Creek Development by Backus Development. The original preliminary plat was only good for a period of 10 years, so in 2012, the preliminary plat expires and no extension was asked for. Prior to the expiration of the preliminary plat, the property was refated for the proposed streets, ponds, and building paths. Streets and utilities were never installed since this area of the original Hidden Creek preliminary plat was never final planted. Since that time, the property was foreclosed and was lender-owned for a few years and now it has been purchased by HC1 LLC and is proposed to be developed. The applicant has submitted a narrative regarding the final plat, which is attached to the memo. At the time of the original preliminary plat, the minimum lot size standards of the R1 district were less than what is required at this time. Therefore, the need to rezone to PRD. This is required because the proposed lots in the preliminary plat do not meet all the minimum width standards of the R1 district. Staff does support the request to allow for narrower lots and a rezoning to PRD. Since the land is refated already to match the original preliminary plat approval and the remainder of the neighborhood was developed with a mixture of those lots with as well. The preliminary plat itself consisted of 66 lots and four outlots that will be used for stormwater ponding or contained wetlands. The applicant is proposing to phase the preliminary plat into two final plats. The first phase is known as Hidden Creek 6th Edition and contains 30 lots and four outlots. Outlet D is the proposed seventh addition. While the other three outlots will be dedicated to the city for open space stormwater management purposes. Street access in the sixth addition will extend Hidden Trail to the west, connect with Pine Cone Lane. A new access to the south, to be known as Red Hawk Way, will be made to 70th Street and Mars. This will be the last connection to the development from streets not contained within the development. The cul-de-sac known as Juniper Knoll will also be constructed off of Hidden Trail. Talks about what the right-of-way width is, and then he also talks about the rezone. Comments received, that we did receive comments from the city engineer. And I'm not going to go through all the comments on all the sidewalks and everything. They're all included in the resolution that was also attached to the memo. And I see Mr. Jensen is present tonight too, so I don't know if he had any further comments at all to what on John's memo.
Got a question?
Do we have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of council staff, we don't have a question regarding John's memo. We do have one. We work well with staff to just try to reconcile some of our business points as well as other items. Page four, the developers' agreement, there just appears to be a math error that doesn't translate from one of the exhibits that it refers to. And we presume that staff and ourselves will be able to reconcile that because it multiplies on itself for the letter of credit purpose. of credit purpose. It's not referenced specifically in the resolution, so it really doesn't, there's no conflict as it relates to the resolutions, but there is just an item of a math, math error still in the development contract. We do have some other thoughts and questions afterwards, but as it relates to the plat, the resolutions, we don't have an issue. I do agree, there's a lot of paper. It would be nice if there was a format, but we don't want to have to pay for staff to reconcile the fact that there's all these additional graphics that a lot of cities don't find necessary. We recognize it's your format, but there you have it.
Okay, this has all been reviewed by city engineer, city planner?
Correct. Actually, Dave, myself, and Mr. Johnson met with Dave Hubert, and Dave Hubert's house was one X-Men, and went over the development agreement also, so to go over some of the final wording that we thought, and so, yes, the city attorney has thought and has forwarded it as a draft, and then if everybody's in agreement, we'll prepare the final documents for signature.
Okay.
We have letter of credit, a use of it, and some of the letter of credit.
Which is why we're walking that. We can go over that after.
And if the math you're talking about is just a simple math type errors, what you're saying?
Correct. It's correct on exhibit app, it wasn't transported up into paragraph two, section three on page four. How many items are correct? And one's A, one is off. But it does all total up near exhibit app.
Okay.
According to our, matches our contractor's quote, I'm sure that there's.
Okay. Any of you have any questions? Okay, then if not, I guess the motion is in order to approve the development agreement.
So it's resolution approving the planned residential development PRD final development plan for Hidden Creek Sixth Edition, it's resolution one dash twenty-five dash 2016 dash five.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second to approve resolution one twenty-five twenty sixteen five for the PRD final development plan for Hidden Creek Sixth Edition. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And then, Mr. Mayor, the second motion would be to approve the final plat, which is resolution one dash twenty-five dash 2016 dash six.
I'll also make the motion, okay, motion is in the second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the resolution one twenty-five twenty sixteen six, proposing a final plat known as Hidden Creek Sixth Edition. Any further question or discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, I guess we'll be getting together with Luanne and, and a lot of documents taken care of, right?
If you want to send me what, and then I'll send it off to Hubert, if he knows.
Yeah, I'll wait till the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Six dot four, authorization of mayor's signature on the planning consultant contract with MDG.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the city mayor has been using municipal development groups of planning services for the past few years. The city has seen an increase in the planning area, and staff is recommending that the city enter into a contract for planning services with MDG. Most of the time that MDG spends on planning issues for the city ends up being paid for by the applicant. The city collects fees for the site plan review, CUP, conditional use, variance, lot split, annexation, and rezone. And the city also budgets $5,000 a year for planning services for city-initiated planning. This would include questions that are asked by residents and/or ordinance changes. Attached is the contract for planning services for 2016. Staff's requesting the mayor's signature on the document.
And this is what we've had to pass for planning, too. Is there a motion to approve this contract? Let me discuss it further if you want to.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the planning consultant contract with MDG. Any further questions or discussion on this?
For as long as I've been here, almost, it's almost 11 years, 10 years, I think Dean Johnson was here, you know, four maybe, but then I think it was shortly after that, as they came in '05 or '06. Might have been '08, I take that back. They did our first comprehensive plan, and then we've used them since then. When Ben left in '07, because we had our own planner. We had Chelsea at first, and we had Ben as the planner, and then in '08, they did our comprehensive plan, and then, I don't know if they started doing some of the planning services then or not, I'd have to go back and look, but it was after that.
After '08, we didn't have very many planning issues.
No, we didn't.
For several years until, and we just went back to them because available.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
How long is this contract for?
One year.
One year.
Okay, not all, okay, and we have the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, six dot five, presentation of mayor fire station feasibility report prepared by Brunton Architects.
I thought Rod wanted to be here for that.
Okay.
Yeah, so Lox is going to text him to come, because he's got a train. Do we want to go on to the next appraisal of the property?
Let's go on to six dot six, then, the appraisal.
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, city council had approved an appraisal of property at 323 Shim Corp., and the city is in receipt of the appraisal, and it is attached in your packet, as I said, in separate emails. The appraiser used two approaches, the cost approach and the market approach. Based on the cost approach, the value of the building is $335,900, which was pages 19 and 20 of the appraisal. Based on the market approach, the value of the property at 328,400, or pages 25 to 34 of the appraisal itself, not your packet. Based on these two approaches, the appraiser has placed an opinion of value on the property at 328,400. The city's purchase agreement amount is 325. City council can now make final determination on the purchase agreement for the property at 323 Shim Corp.
Okay, then we have any questions about the appraisal or comments about it? This was the appraisal that we had requested be done before finishing up the purchase agreement. Would we want to have a motion to accept this appraisal as presented?
Tomorrow, the purchase agreement expires, so I think you have to make a decision on either to accept the appraisal, and then if you're going to purchase the property or not.
Okay, so you have the appraisal in front of you, oh, how many pages of it? And appraisal value of $328,000, $328,400. Is there a motion to accept this appraisal as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Your second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second to accept the appraisal presented to us as presented. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, then, we have discussed the, we had the building inspector inspected, found nothing out of the ordinary, it was in good shape. We have the appraisal, which we have requested the confi, was this a confidential appraisal or not?
It didn't end up being that. He was supposed to, but he didn't end up doing it as I asked him to. I have not shared it with anyone, but, well, it's public information because you have it, so.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, too, but anyhow, so, so, so then, a motion being ordered then to proceed with the purchase agreement. This was one question we had about it, the purchase agreement, as stipulated, in the amount of $325,000. And I will make that a motion, how we proceed with that purchase agreement as it was drawn Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to proceed with the purchase agreement for the property at 324 Shim Corp., or 323 Shim Corp., right? 323 Shim Corp., at the price of $325,000. Any further discussion or questions? Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Still by show hand, so I, so I, aye, opposed, motion carried, three to two. Okay, then we can go back to presentation of the mayor's fire, I say, feasibility report. And Rod is here.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Brunton Architects have completed the fire station feasibility study. Attached is the study for council review. They did place an amount, place on the construction of the new fire station, according to the report, is $2,386,400. Staff will update the 20-year financial plan to reflect the updated amount. Council can accept or acknowledge the receipt of this report. I don't know if Brad wants to add anything.
This report in our packet, I don't think, I think I missed it.
I don't think it's in the packet, I just see it in the packet that I got emailed. I just, you emailed this to me earlier on Friday.
So it looks like this. So do you want to hold off and then put this on the next agenda till you have?
No, he came up here. I just want to know if it was in our packet.
Well, again, it was all the confusion with what was coming back and what wasn't going.
Yeah, I think I missed the second piece, too.
Yeah.
Because I only have two emails. Part one and then, and then the rest of packet from item nine.
So I need to send it to you. And if you want to, I can put it on the next agenda, too, if you would rather.
Do we have, do you have it up here?
I have it up here.
Just put it up there.
Just put it up here, and we can just kind of review it, yeah.
We can go through it up here.
And I'll send it to you, I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
If, I'm larger, a little bit larger here, there we go.
You want to go through it then, kind of?
Yeah.
From the beginning, or do you have it all up there, Luanne?
Yeah, I've got, I've got this, I've got the maps and all this kind of stuff there, too. So the matrix is the first thing right here.
That's the, you don't have the rest of it, or, I don't know, I guess, I want to thank you for looking at this, planning ahead, because I think that's a big part of your job, is to plan for the city. And Eric, as you know, emergency management, that's what you do. You plan for it, and I think that's, that's your job, you need to do that. It's also my job. And that's somewhat, I'm proposing it, or to look into it. I never gave it a thought as far as planning when I joined the fire department, or when I became chief, that I'd be planning for active shooter. It's one of them things you never think of, and I think the city has to look, you know, things come up and stuff. In April, we're going to be planning for active shooter, and I think you people need to be planning ahead also. The way things went, Cory Burton, from, he's the president, the owner of the company, and Abeth Mashack, came out, was a designer and stuff, came out and talked to Jerry and I about things that we are looking for, places to, sites and stuff, what our needs are. He asked questions on the, you know, what, what we are looking for, what trucks we have, or meeting facilities, or different things. He gave questions to both Jerry and I. Told them about all our trucks, what trucks we have that we need. One of the big things was meeting room. Meeting room is, it's small, it's hard to deal at times, and it's so in need of a bigger meeting room. So he went through it, asked us a few more questions, and asked us about sites. They had originally agreed to two sites. Jerry had asked if we could do a third site, and he said yes, and I said, what about, we've got other places, maybe other sites that would work, would you look at them, to narrow it down to three sites? So we showed them the site right in the corner of Shim Corp., and 25, where the city owns. We sold them a second site in Shim Corp., where there's a possibility, where it's a bigger lot that we could use. And I had asked them, we showed them TYSIS lots, to see what, if that would be, work. Said right away, he says it's not real feasible, there's a lot of infrastructure that you're going to have to do, road, water, grading, and stuff, and he says, I don't see it being a real applicable place to put a fire station. Also went down to Cologne, the co-op, and there's that lot where, you know, some of you knew where Rich had his bulk tanks and stuff. Looked at that site, says it's a smaller site than what your site is on 25, and then we went out to the compost, looked at that site, and he said he would, you know, that'd probably be the three sites that we would go with then.
So it's just, I want to make sure, so the current, site one is the current lot, the Shim Corp. and 25?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
And then the, the second one, is that another one in that, on Shim Corp.?
Correct.
This is actually adjacent to the Public Works Building, though.
Oh, so it would be next?
Right, next door to it.
Next door, okay.
Just to the south of it.
And then the water treatment.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I knew.
Yeah, we got maps of them, I forgot, too.
Yep.
Well, yeah, I, well, I got the maps here, so.
Okay, so, thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so with that information, he laid out a building far as our needs, tried to, or he kept it in squares, basically, so, because that's going to be your least expensive building, as, you know, not different parts off, but are angles or anything. So you can see, he gave us two feasibility, or two plans. This one was one, or A, I think Jerry, is that, you got?
This is, uh...
Let's see, go back to it again.
This is the one with, I think the other one here has got the second story to it.
This would be, uh, A.
Here's A, okay, the first word, A.
Yep. That was one way of doing it, with the things that he thought would be necessary. Three offices, one for the chief, assistant chief, and then training officer. It'd be kitchen, meeting room, which would be connected. And you have your, there's a storage room for the meeting room, men's and women's, and then your mechanical room. And there would be a fitness room and a storage room. On the, up on top, it would be that, oh, now that's a storage that would be above the meeting room and stuff. Then there's a SCBA room, a unisex bathroom, and then a hose tower. With that hose tower, it'd be, up on top, they'd put windows, so during storms, we could go up and, you know, see any oncoming thing that would be close into town.
Would this building fit on any of those sites, or is this?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, I didn't see that, sorry, just was making, so this is just one version of the building?
We'll, we'll get to that once here.
Okay.
Is it a functional hose tower?
Yes. He suggested it, he said it's, it's still a need for it, it's, and according to our, what do I call it, our IC, or, yeah, you need a place to dry hose.
Now, I just, are they, like, I know that... Now, I just, are they, probably, I know that we're not talking about building it like tomorrow, but is the co-, I mean, because we're getting different layouts, but the building's the same size, like would the layout or something be something...
Exact same square, exact same square footage, each one.
But is it, is it, the cost then would be different, which layout you did, or were just different options?
Yeah, correct. We'll get to the cost, and then we'll kind of, you know, it'll show that cost or whatever. So and then, the other one, if you look, it's pretty similar, it's just the hallways are different and, you know, it's...
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why.
Yep.
If we're just, just trying to figure this...
Footprints are the same, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because it just seems kind of preemptive to be like, are we talking about how to lay out something if we...
No, it's just...
A different idea, yeah.
Different, uh, you know, just to get square footages of what we need, or, you know, what they're...
Oh, right, okay, that makes sense, so you'd need this much space, and here's, you want three meeting rooms.
Your base should be so many square feet, your offices should be certain size, or, you know...
Right, what can fit in there?
Yep.
Thank you, I just...
And to answer, if I, if I may, Rod?
Yep.
Answer Nikki's questions here, here's the, so it's the same, so here's our current, current lot that we own.
Okay.
Here's Twenty-Five and Shimcor, and the building lays out on there with twenty-nine parking stalls.
Okay, got it.
So putting it on to the lot next to the Public Works building now, here's the Public Works building now, and here's the same building, just, all right, but there are forty-four parking stalls. Now, this is obviously something to change now, if we own this property, we don't have the setbacks to worry about, so there are things we can change as far as expand, it gives us a little more room for this, this room, this one is a little tighter for expansion, is it right there?
And if you, yes.
And I don't...
There is a room, and you can, are you, on this one, we'd be going out sideways, turning, and then coming out.
Yeah, how, yeah, how would you even get out of the...
It's kind of a tight...
Just trying to maneuver the trucks in and out.
Well, there's room, but I mean, it's, it's a little more hassle, a little more, takes a little more time, instead of going straight out the door.
There you're going straight out.
Which, that's one is planned straight out.
And with forty-four parking stalls, and then here it's laid out on the wastewater treatment plant. You know, obviously a lot more parking stalls. Yeah, but, so that's how it lays out on the three, on the three properties. Go ahead, Rod, I'm sorry.
That's where Rod is going next, I guess, so, that's fine, so...
I think...
So then, next thing that we were to do was have a committee and do what they call selection, uh, selection metrics. And we were to, uh, was to get, um, four people, or five people, I guess it was, two, or four people, to grade the sites. And this is what they said is their best way of, they've done all kinds of these, it's, it's system seems to work out the best far as picking the correct site that you should have.
I'm getting there.
On, on a, Jerry was on, on that committee, Luann was on, Kyle was on, and Bob. I didn't really, I didn't have anything to say, say about. I was, just sat at the meeting and listened to what they were talking about.
And one of the very, the very last page, that site selection matrix, and we were to rate and rank each one of them based on geographic location, and then they wait, they took us back and they weighted our answers on one to five, five being the highest, one being the least, and then they had numbers that they put to our numbers, and then we did the same on the lot size and expansion, safety, utilities, cost of the land, and then they pulled it all up. So you can see that site one was actually, was the numbers for us.
So what, what's safety, what does, what does that entail?
Safety would be, um, Jerry and Luann are going to have to help you out a little bit on it, but, um, far as getting to the fire station, leaving from the fire station, if it's close to school, for instance, you know, you don't want to have, you know, it can be involved in some safety items, I don't know, anything else?
And you're, you're commenting about getting out of the, getting the trucks out of that one, and make it a corner to get, okay, that was, that was a safety issue.
Right.
It's harder, it's harder to make that turn and get out to the...
Well, and then if you've got people, if there are only one, oh, no, there was two entrance, because I'm like, if you've got firemen coming, yes. But there's, there's two entrances, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's what safety was like, Rod, just, uh, so you're not exiting onto a street close to a school or stuff like this, or going past the school, uh, as a primary route that you're taking to respond to a, to a call or something like that.
Or residential, it made a difference. Lot size, they were looked at, well, first of all, as far as this grading, they could grade one to five, each one. And if necessary, site one would be two, and site, you know, they didn't have to use the numbers up, they could repeat the numbers.
So one could be a, one could be a, both could be five to one. Just after the safety, wasn't the safety part of that about the, um, the firemen getting to the fire station in enough time too? Where was that one, and if we were out of the compost site, then was, was that...
Geography.
That was the geography, okay.
Geography, geography, location.
I'm sorry about that.
So, then you went to lot size, and the lot size was if you had room to expand. Safety, like we talked to utilities, if we needed to bring more utilities in, or that, that was that factor in the cost of land. No questions on that? Each one had a number as far as importancey, that, um, they multiplied that at, you know, so if everybody went to, you know, had added up to ten, they multiplied that number to a certain point. So you see, site two was the site that scored the highest.
Well, is that property even for sale?
It is for sale.
It is for sale.
Unless it's changed, but I mean, there's a sign up for it for sale.
Okay, any questions for, for Rod, or any other comments, Rod?
Um, well, if you want to go on farther, I think you had the cost of, I mean, the size of the building?
Probably, probably costs here, yep.
Well, not, um, no, the calcu- or as far as the size, what our building was and stuff, did you have that?
Yeah, that's as far as I go here.
You, you had it before, you were showing it when you were...
What the existing building is?
What the existing building is and what the proposed square footage is.
Oh, I think that's where, here.
So how they derived that.
Oh, this one, okay.
Now, is this a square footage, this...
Eight-five. So the offices were each to be a hundred and twenty, existing, we have a hundred and ten. Um, meeting, training room, we have a total of five hundred and twenty-seven, their suggestion is twelve fifty for fifty people, twenty-five square feet a person. Kitchen, we got thirty-six feet, and we propose two eighty, the tower, two hundred, but there is none, storages, none. We don't have a SCBA and laundry room at all, no fitness room.
What is a, what, what is SCBA, oh, that, is that where all the...
The air patch?
Air packs are?
We don't, technically, we're supposed to have a separate room for cleaning and repairing our SCBA. You know, it's supposed to be kind of a narrow, uh, how should I, a clean environment.
What happens since we don't, I mean, is there like...
We don't have a choice.
Right, so it just, okay.
Um, mechanical room, we don't have, compressor room, compressor rooms like for our, um, say, a compressor for keeping air in the trucks and a compressor for the SCBA, it's an awful loud, um, item, which, you know, would be nicer to be closed in. And then the apparatus space, nine bays, at eight hundred square feet each, comes to seventy-two, uh, seventy-two hundred and forty-five hundred is what we have. So that's where they came up with that square footage of that building that we're talking, or, you know, showed you.
So we're basically saying, we need about two and a half times our current space, roughly two and a half times, or two and a quarter times of current space.
How many trucks do we have right now? Like trucks, like we have eight?
Well, there's nine, there's, yeah, there is.
Oh, I saw you.
So in a statement of possible cost, or you got any questions with that, or with this again?
So one has hose tower and one does not?
Both of them have it.
And one just has an extra second floor storage room?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Oh, there's a hose tower.
Ohio is the second floor, is that not walkable, or?
No, that will be walkable, yeah, otherwise they don't consider the storage area.
Can that be converted to any other use at some point?
Yeah. You know they can.
Yeah, you can do anything with that.
Yeah.
You got to have enough money.
And with this, this price, was this with tip-up construction, something like that, or?
Okay, on the statement of possible, that is with a tip-up structure, which is spancrete, or concrete panels, that all they do is they put the footings in, they come with a crane, set the panels up, and then put the roof up. It's real fast, you know, construction far as that goes, labor-wise, it's, you know, you're saving your labor on doing it, and you've got a...
Does it still have an elevator in it?
No.
There's one required?
No, we don't have, I mean, the, the storage, you don't need, as far as I know, and according to them, you do not need an elevator for storage. There's only, um, you know, it's small at one level, otherwise. If we made a meeting room, or whatever, you know, then you're probably, then you're going to have to, so.
I would guess a pu-...
The departments have gotten by with this.
I would guess a public building would.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, like Rod said earlier, this is a good planning tool, it's a good tool to have in front of us as we go forward here. Gives us some good facts and good figures to look at, for evaluation. Any other, any questions, any other comments or questions?
I guess if you see, you know, it all, you know, cost all depends on when you ever do something, I guess, you know, that's going to always have to be updated, so.
What is the ho-, I mean, the hose towers are just so you can dry, dry your hoses, or dry your hoses?
Well, it has a two-purpose thing, dry hoses and to do, you know, a sky watch out of it.
And that's a pretty needed thing?
The, the hose?
Yeah.
The hose, uh, uh, drying, yes.
Yeah, what do you do now?
We got a rack.
You do have a rack, okay.
How much are hose dryers?
I don't know, I've never priced one, I just don't have a place to put it, so...
Yeah, they're big.
I mean, that is an option. Like I say, this is preliminary, you don't have to put it in there, you do, I mean, everything can change, you know, lo-, I think as long as we keep to that square footage type situation, so.
No, I think hose tower is, is needed, it's just, like, if you were starting to move down, what's most important? If you're really on a cost budget, like, does that add a lot of money to the building? Then weighing the pluses and minuses to it, like, I don't know, I mean...
I don't either. I assume that I have something.
We've never had one, so how would you know how it just goes, right?
Well, the price difference would be the price per square foot versus a mechanical type, which...
Yeah.
Dryer.
Exactly. Okay, and you'd probably still have the square footage, if you had the dryer or not.
Plus you did... Plus if you had a dryer, probably you'd, you'd insulate a room as far as sound, to keep the sound...
What's that?
You probably need inside room as far as sound, to keep the sound on, if you had, if you had a hose dryer, that'd be kind of noisy operation too. So, all relative. Okay, well, I think that gives us some...
Yeah, this is super, this is helpful to understand what size building we actually would need for what we have.
And I do have a picture, I don't know, it's just on my phone, it's kind of what the look of the building would be somewhat. It's just, you know, uh, concrete sides, and, you know, you have your trim and stuff, basically, so. There is no, you can add different designs in, in the concrete, but, you know, it all depends what you want to do, so. If you want to have to have brick on it, you can, they can put a brick part on it, so.
Okay, thank you, Rod.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Uh, council reports, are there any council reports?
Um, I had a community ed meeting, uh...
When was that?
Last Thursday. They, um, the superintendent was there, he's been coming to the meeting, so that's kind of exciting that he's kind of getting to be part of that. He said that he wants to work more with the city of mayor, to, to make sure that we're more included on, um, with the school stuff, so it's kind of exciting that he sees that is kind of lacking a little bit. So I think, you know, I think he's talked to Luann a couple of times, and, you know, they're trying to think of what they can do even with more community ed stuff out here, that what is the need for the city of mayor, and, um, nothing, it was just kind of discussions about, you know, we've got fitness stuff that are going on here, but, you know, how can we continue to make sure that they have things out here, and making sure that we're communicating with them, saying we still have fields for more soccer, or, you know, more commu-, you know, like, uh, youth things, but then also, there was even talk about, um, their current kids company program, is there's a waiting list? So is there ever a possibility that, that we could, there could be something housed in the city of mayor for, um, extended care, childcare, as well, as, as a, as a solution to fix their waiting list problem too? I mean, so, it was just lots of interesting talk, more about bringing the city of mayor in, just because everything is so Watertown-based, that we do lose about a hundred students to Laconia.
I've talked to him too, and kind of was hoping to facilitate some meetings with the city, to just kind of talk about that disconnect between the water, or the perceived disconnect between Watertown mayor and everything being over that way. Um, one of the, one of the complaints I hear fairly often is, um, is the bus schedule. Um, the kids that ride to, to mayor and back, and back to Watertown, back to mayor, um, it's quite a long bus ride.
Long, long bus ride.
Um, maybe talk about that issue as well, so we could maybe see if he's interested in coming to a meeting or works outside, that would be great.
Well, it's, it's probably important to get that communication going, because the squeaker wheel gets the grease, so that's why it's just need to... Keep putting out... Keep putting an altar in front of them, so they know that we want to be considered.
Yeah, I know, so they, but otherwise, you know, everything's, um, good, just continue to talk about, um, communication and you're really excited that they could use the city sign, electronic sign for things, they were so excited about that. They're like, oh, we just called, and she said, yeah, no problem, what color do you want? So, they're really excited that they could use the sign for some of their things.
Good, good, okay. Thank you, Nikki, anything else?
Sure. All right, um, Ivan and Luann has had contact with Nutelcom on, um, some internet issues that we're having, maybe specifically more toward our development, maybe more so than everywhere else, but, um, uh, again, last night I talked to another person who lives in our development that's having a lot of problems with internet speed and bandwidth. Um, they're aware of the issues and they're working through some fixes, um, maybe see some changes by the end of April. Um, so they're doing some testing, but, um, so in contact with them and let people know that we're trying to kind of hopefully get that service up to where it should be.
I'm sorry, now, you, you, where do you live?
I live over in, um, in Crete, TBI, I can't remember.
Okay, I'm sorry, I said whatever I don't. Uh, I, I do know they have been continually trying to upgrade it, because more and more people getting internet and more and more people using all this Netflix and stuff, which I've started using too, which I honestly love, so.
Yeah, the, the, the infrastructure, they're working on upgrading their infrastructure systems and trying to, trying to get that service a little more consistent, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anything else?
I attended my first park board meeting. Uh, they went over their goals for the year, the budgets, um, talked about, uh, the grant that they received, um, for the park, to make it more handicap accessible.
Oh, they did get it?
So, um, and might give them a little bit of an update on the public works building becoming available for use. And, uh, they're pursuing more information regarding hockey rinks, boards, and the base, and that, see what that's gonna cost.
Okay, thank you.
Are we gonna have, can we have another joint meeting with the city council and the park board?
I've got a deal.
Like in the next couple months, maybe, cause, you know, it, with moving and having that open, like, kind of just revisiting what everybody's kind of thinking about that property, maybe?
Yeah.
Cause didn't we talk about maybe doing it quarterly?
Yeah.
Just once a quarter? So I don't know if Luann, you wanna send out an email and maybe say what, you know, we have February's meeting, but maybe March, and just figure out when, and talk to the park board and see if they'd be interested in having us come to, in which meeting, the February or the March one, which if they wanna prepare something, it may even come to March, I think.
I think they talked about that. That was on their, they add that to their goals, Luann, and then, I don't know if they actually set up a date or a month to do it, you know?
Well, you can-
But March would be the end of the first quarter, yeah.
I know there was a goal for the council and the park board, it was Kyle was gonna attend the quarter, quarterly based meetings, so we got his input, so.
Yeah, I, when we, when Eric and I went to the park board, we talked about meeting quarterly. Just as a, make sure, cause we, we didn't want them to have all these ideas and grand plans, and then it comes to us and then we're like, yeah, no, that's not really what we were thinking, and I think there was some older information from a while ago that they, from direction from older city councils, um, and just to kind of stay on top of it, so that we at least have the same goals in mind together, so that they're not wasting their time, or even wasting-
Well, I think just some dialogue, a meeting would be worthwhile.
I mean, we just come for the beginning part, or, you know, like, it doesn't have to be the whole time, it's just, let's sit down and see what this looks like, you know?
Okay, so you wanna try recording something, Luann?
Yes, do you wanna go to their meeting, is that what you wanna do, or you want them to come to the city council?
What's your preference? I, I have no preference, really.
Then I'll work with them in February to set up something for March.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, anything else? Any other business needs come for a council?
You know, we've been talking about this internet problem for quite a while, and I'm wondering if we should pursue Jaguar and have them come to the council and find out what the holdup is to get internet available in the community? I know there's areas that are offering communities the Jaguar cable, um, and they're offering cable to anyone that is adjacent to the line. So the homes where the lines run through the community, they'll hook you up, but they're not really promoting it in our community. And, uh, they're here as part of that grant that Carver County got. So, how do we get them to come to a meeting?
Do we know where their, where their line comes in, like, across town?
Right, down, cause Zion is on Jaguar. Zion, Zion School is on, is on Jaguar, on Fire Optic, North Straight.
How far south do they go?
You know, it goes, they must go down.
It goes down.
Down twenty-five.
Down twenty-five.
That's going, right, by the, the property of Jaguar?
Oh, okay, oh, so that's where you're set.
That's the city, no, that's Carver, that's Carver County Fire Optic, right. That's their own.
One of the things is I did talk to Jaguar, and there's no infrastructure within the city, so they don't have any in the residential areas. I know they've done it in New Germany, but they've only got a couple of streets to do in New Germany, and he was willing to, you know, talk to the city, but that's what's holding them back, is that they don't have the wire in the city streets here. So we could have them to a work session, I could find out if he could make it to the month, to the March work session if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Okay.
I'd like to see what it's gonna take, because I know they're overlaying the city of Hamburg, and they're working in the city of Northern America. They did in Germany. What do we gotta do to get them to start looking at our communities, sort of, even with Pacsmar? It's gonna be putting conduit in the ground next year to have something available to use.
I, I'll get them to the work session in March, see if they can come.
I think that'd be good for the community.
Oh, absolutely, you know, I think, when I talk to, um, Nutelcom, they have grown, I mean, it just, with, um, with broadband going out, they picked up a lot of customers, and they're just dealing with, um, some older infrastructure they're trying to, um, to work out. Your problem is you're going from fiber to, um, to copper to everybody's houses, and that's where the-
That's where the bottom line is, is, is the copper.
They're trying to just overload it, or just mono usage, so.
Well, what I'm hearing is Frontier has also applied for some of this grant money, to get some of this fiber infrastructure, and it's just a matter, like Jerry said earlier, the squeaky wheel is getting the attention, so, and maybe they're not hearing us. Asking for, maybe we-
I'd say, I think they were just getting Jaguar out here, yes, I do agree.
I, I agree as well.
So, do you wanna make a contact, Luann?
Yes, I will.
See if-
For March work session.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, then, we are number nine, um, it's a closed session according to Minister Statute, Minister Statute thirteen D dot O five to discuss the sale price of property. So this meeting is now closed.
Could we adjourn for just a few minutes, so that we can deal with Don and his number thing? Is that be okay with you? And then I'll shut this down.
Is it adjourned or recessed?
Or recessed, or, yeah, recessed, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, do I take a few minutes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll just have a brief recess, and then close the meeting.
It's not on the legal basis in cities.
Okay, this meeting is back open. And we'll, yes, is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
I'll make that a motion. Yes, I'll make that a motion.
Second, motion made second to adjourn.
Just around, open that door up, to make sure there's nobody outside, and that's open, and-
At least we have it out there, we'll wait a little bit here. Okay. Okay, so then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Okay, work session, Neil Gubbs, Neil Gubbs webinar.
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, and I forwarded that link to you, do you want me just to forward it to everyone, and they can review it at their own? I thought we could do it at the meeting tonight, if you wanted to?
When I tried to do the link, you can't fill some stuff in, it won't just play, it doesn't-
Oh, it won't, that's what he said, I was discussing using the below link to display recorded demonstration.
No, I clicked it, and you, then you have to fill in some information, so I'm not-
Well, then I guess we'll have to wait, cause that's what this was.
Yeah, I would think they would, should be at least, if not, if not a video link, a PDF link or something, a PDF, I mean, a PowerPoint.
I'll let them know that it didn't work.
Yeah.
And see if I can get a PowerPoint from them, okay, for the next meeting, and that's what, okay?
I was gonna put in, you know, Joe Blow in there for some, but I figured better not do that either, so. Okay, you, just discussion on irrigation water ma- water meter rates.
Yeah, this was something that, um, Councilmember Osborne brought up, that he wanted to discuss maybe having different rates for irrigation meters than for the water meters in the house, and I, I was thinking about this today, I mean, if we go back to the rate study that Jerry did, and what he said the rates should be, that would justify raising those rates, you could make the irrigation rates, you could go all the way to the end of the five years on the water, if you wanted to, cause that's what we need to have to, to break even, or you could do it halfway, or whatever you wanted to do.
Oh, you mean, you mean the irrigation, irrigation, irrigation rate? Oh, yeah, I guess I never even thought about that.
I just thought about that today, cause you have to justify your fees based on what the costs are, well, they're justified on the cost.
Right.
We've got them justified, they could go all the way to the top of the five years on just the irrigation meters, if you wanted, if you wanted to do that, to try to conserve.
So currently for water usage, do we build the household water and the irrigation together?
No, they're separate.
They're separate.
They're separate items.
So you start over when you start with irrigation?
What do you mean you start over?
At zero, you know, when it, when you're adding it.
They each have their own meter.
Right.
Correct, but-
So zero to six thousand, and zero to six thousand, you're paying the six thousand on each.
But if you had three thousand, three thousand, you're not paying for six thousand.
Well, it's the same rate of six, it's when it goes over six, you pay more.
You might have three, you might have three for your household, you might have ten for irrigation.
Correct.
And so you're paying at the ten thousand, ten thousand gallon rate for irrigation, but only the three for your home.
Home.
Correct.
For the rate of five, but the graduate rate.
Oh, so, so the rates that we set up would apply both ways?
Right, they do not, yeah.
I know the DNR was promoting a tiered system, which, when you started getting higher irrigation users, it like doubled your water rates.
We do that, we do that now.
So it does, it does?
We do that in the rates, it doesn't necessarily double, but it goes up the more usage you have.
Okay. That, that was my only concern, is we wanna promote, you know, water conservation, and we wanna make sure we're doing it the right way. I don't have a problem if people wanna buy water, but the guys that are using a lot of water, we wanna make sure we're getting our fair share for that water.
Those are the automatic sprinklers, that keep a nice soft carpet between, that's ideal.
And, and we're addressing that with, um, with, uh, the new development agreement, which, uh, we did in the landscaping requirements, that they have six inches of black dirt, because that's part of the problem, that people have to have so much water in the new development. They don't have enough black dirt under that sod, in order to keep the grass alive, they've gotta water it. So, we did, did address that in the Hidden Creek six development agreement. Who knew?
So, uh, just a thought, now that we're doing that with new development, we got a new developer coming, are we trying to sell double meters when they pick meters up?
They, they have to, it's an ordinance.
A new house gets two.
Two.
Automatically gets two.
It's an ordinance, that-
I kn- I knew it was, but, you know, some people chose not to put the second one in after-
No, they can't.
In their old homes, because they don't-
In the old homes, they don't have to.
Correct.
But the new, all new homes have to have two meters, yep, they do, yep.
How does it know the difference, oh, cause it's just your outside-
It's the radio read.
Yeah, the radio, the MXU reads them each different, so, yep.
There's, there's-
Have to be plumbed, right?
The radio will read two meters in your basement.
The MXU will.
It's set up to read two meters, you know, and-
So your, so your, so your, your water meter has a number that's assigned to it through the radio read, and we know which one is irrigation and which one is household meter, and so then that's put into the banyan system. So when he reads it, and it tells us how many gallons, then it gets conveyed into the computer, into the banyan, and then it calculates it out.
But I think Nikki's question is how do-
Well, no, like, how does it know, is it just, cause I only have, like, two outdoor water?
But both, both of those, both those outdoor waters, they get started plumbed, just to one meter, just to the outer meter.
But if I got a second meter, who plums it in?
Oh, lover.
So I have to, so if I bought a second meter, I'd have to then also hire a plumber.
Yeah.
To put in a second one. We don't, we don't, we don't have an irrigation system, so, to me, it's not a big deal.
And you have full blown mature trees too, which makes a difference, it's the grass gets shaded sun.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're not watering your new trees every week.
Hopefully, we have any water meters.
So, does, does that take care of the discussion on the meter rates?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So there's really no action?
No action.
Does it? It's got, and-
Yep, yep.
Okay, discussion on landscaping requirements, C one, general commerce, C two, central business, CI, commercial industrial, and PI, public social districts.
This was Bruce again, brought this up, wanted to discuss it a little bit more about the landscaping requirements that the planning commission was proposing to change. So I did provide the memo and the ordinance in your packet.
Didn't we already vote on this, or?
No, it's got tables.
Oh, those got tables.
Or, yeah.
And, uh, planning commission chose to remove the ground cover in front of the building.
All the foundation plantings.
Foundation plantings, and they chose to remove all the overstory trees, they call them, on the side and rear of those lots. My only concern is when you go south out of town, you see all those buildings there. You know, if they're putting them on the back line, you wouldn't, if, if there was trees on the back of them, you wouldn't see the back of the building out. You know, and I, we had one business owner that's building a new business in town, he made some comments about the requirements we had in question. So the planning commission looked at it, and they're gonna make these changes based on one business owner.
And I just, we're gonna end up with houses on that other farm property, I'm not really able to imagine, and I just, I don't know if I'm comfortable leaving that open. You know, I mean, if, if it was strictly an industrial area, and it's industrial, and it's gonna be nothing else but, you know, up to that, I think I'd be okay with leaving that, you know, let them leave it open without any, you know, ground coverage of trees, but there's gonna be houses there eventually. And, um, I don't know, I just, I think we need to have, have that buffer zone there.
And you put, have the developer put the buffer zone in. The trouble is, these lots are so small, that there's no room for the companies to store anything. And now, if we're gonna have two lots, we have to put trees, and that's gonna take away from parking, and from rock and gravel, and whatever storage.
They plant trees on berms all day long, and you go down that berm and plant trees on the backside of those lots, on those hills, they're gonna come down into the swamp.
So would you require?
There is no berm though, there's no berm.
Well, it's, I'm, I'm saying they plant trees on berms, so where that slopes off of the lot, down into the swamp, you could plant on that slope.
But that, that's not part of the lot, I don't think that where the slope is though, that's, that's probably part of the swamp. I don't, I don't think, I, I guess, I look at, from a business point of view, if I, if I were building, buying a lot out there to build a manufacturing thing, I want to, do things, a few obstacles in the way.
And I get that completely, absolutely.
That's why I'm concerned about, if we're trying to attract any kind of business, any kind of commercial business there, we need to make a friendly for them. I, I, I would agree with that, we need some foundation plant, I think a little bit of foundation plantings looks good, you know, it doesn't have to be fancy, just to-
But if you have a, if you have your, um, parking lot right up to the building, there's no room.
Right, then you got a problem there too, and that's, and, and again, I am thinking of, uh, who's the, uh, you have to make up there, I think you're, their parking lot goes right up to the building, they'd only be spending time shelving sawdust, stuff like that, they already, you know, like that, they would've just gone for a vodka, down and played up the stuff.
And they were also required to plant trees while we were on the lot.
Yeah, the ones that are already there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were sticklers about it, well, I wasn't on it that time, but I remember it, I remember a lot of strong patients.
Well, to tell you the truth, everything that the city owns, like the water treatment plant and the lift station, we have not planted a stick of tree around any of them either, so, and that's part of this, the public and the institutional.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at some of the other cities here, I mean, a lot of them don't require, I mean, Northern America- Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at some of the other cities here, I mean, a lot of them don't require, I mean, Norrie America, trees, non-fall plantings, non-found, Cologne, um, has some, eight trees, one tree per three thousand square feet. Uh, built plain, green built, you know, pretty minimal for the most part, I mean, it was... I don't know, I, I don't know, I get, I don't know, I get to skit us a while, we chase businesses away, because we're making their lot unusable, and, uh, and I like trees too, I, I, all four of it.
Well, I'm assuming if that farm land behind there, or develops, developers probably gonna come in there and put in some buffer zones, and keep their property values up, and not have to look at them.
Oh, yeah. I think you would do that, just simply because to keep the business values back up, so.
Yeah.
Unless it ends up being commercial.
Unless it's just to be commercial, then.
I mean, we're kind of, I mean, we have that one section that's not, I mean, you can see it, but you don't see it, but I, I mean, if we did that buffer zone, I don't know, I'd, I would rather have businesses in here than them saying, no, I just can't, it doesn't work with my type of business, with all these plantings and trees, I'd rather have the business here than-
Have it look nice?
Well, I mean, I think it's-
I think that's the trade-off, I, I guess I, I'd rather plant more trees than residential.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. I mean, I could care less driving down twenty-five and looking and seeing the rest of the area, that's, it is, it is what it is.
There's still a couple trees along the road, though, right?
Yeah.
They kept that, right, along the prunge? Like, in, could dock the right of way?
Well, I don't think it looks crap, I mean- 'Cause they, we, they haven't started building yet without any of the standards that were already in place, so, they all look pretty nice, and we've already held, held many of them to, after all the standards, and now, they're gonna say, ah, forget it, you can do what you want.
But a lot of them haven't put anything along the side.
Yeah, I don't think, uh, plus it's a-
I think that was the whole purpose, wasn't it? Didn't they do an inventory, and realize that there really wasn't much on the back and the sides anyway? Let's remember Chelsea Alger was dealing with all the incom- the incomplete landscaping, when she was here, and then, then Ben did, and then I think I did, and people came, and we compromised on the landscaping requirements. We didn't require them to stick to what the standards were that we had, anyway, is my recollection.
Well, a lot, I, I was familiar with.
Right, 'cause I, I mean, I, I get your point, like, you just meet all these other people, have it, and now we're like, oh, never mind, we've got these new businesses, and-
Well, some have complied, probably the cabinet guy, and probably, you know, some have, but not all. A lot of them, we've compromised on the landscaping requirements already.
A lot of did not.
Right. So, I just need to know what you wanna do with the ordinance, if you wanna-
Well, just bring it up, and then next meeting, I will, I'll, I think I know where I stand, so.
So, you can either yay or nay, yeah, okay.
Hey, sounds good.
Was that it, was that all?
We're done, thank you.